Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Matt Brown. I work at NYSERDA. Thank you, everybody, for joining. It looks like we've got a robust group of attendees that is continuing to add, so we'll just give it another, just maybe 30 seconds or so, just for folks to join in who might be transitioning from the last meeting. And then we're going to go ahead and get started right away. So thanks for joining, and we'll get started in just a few seconds here. Thanks, everybody, for joining. This is Matt Brown with NYSERDA. We appreciate everybody taking your time to spend an hour with us here on Friday afternoon. This is public hearing for application criteria and federal funding related to grid resiliency and innovation and the electric grid. I just want to note that the source, primary source of funding for these is the bipartisan infrastructure law, and we're thankful to our federal partners for allocating these funds. This is a formula grant awarded to states and territories. And in New York, these funds are by law administered by NYSERDA. Today, we'll be speaking about our currently anticipated approach to administer these funds, and we're seeking your feedback, importantly, to help inform our final application and program design. Before we begin, we do just have a couple of housekeeping items. And if I could ask to advance to the next slide. So we're, number of panelists, go on mute if you're not speaking, please. That way, we will minimize background noise. If anyone has questions at any time, we do ask that the attendees, if you have any questions, ask that you enter them at any time throughout the course of the meeting today. We'll answer them at the end, but we would appreciate if everybody would ask questions along the way that we make sure we're not losing anything. At the end of the meeting, we'll have a moderated Q and A, at which time attendees will have the opportunity to ask questions and make comments. If there's any technical issues, please email tricia.king@nyserta.ny.gov. Again, that's tricia.king@nyserta.ny.gov. Next slide, please. So just for today's agenda, again, we plan to spend about an hour together here. We will start with background and overview of the program itself and talk about anticipated award criteria. We'll talk about funding distribution and expected data collection. And then importantly, we'll talk about next steps and feedback and discussion at the end of the meeting here. Next slide, please. So just as a little bit of background, this funding, again, is federal funds allocated through the bipartisan infrastructure law, specifically being deployed through the Grid Deployment Office in the Department of Energy. NYSERDA's allocation is based on a formula through the federal government, and we are anticipating to receive approximately $12 million for each year for five years. So the state is required to match those funds at a 15% cost share. So the total funds going out into the program will be slightly more than that $12 million federal allocation. This first round of funding is anticipated for the first two years of budget. The Department of Energy has very nicely allocated both years in this first allocation. And NYSERDA's application to access those funds is due March 31st. So this public hearing is one of required steps to help include public feedback in this hearing so that NYSERDA can take that into account as we prepare our final application for submission to Department of Energy. Next slide, please. So this is just a visual overview of how the funding will work and different participants in the program. And again, there's a 15% cost share that's required by NYSERDA to be put into these funds to go into the market. Next slide, please. And with that, it's my pleasure to introduce Hafiz, who will be overseeing these funds, and turn the presentation over to him.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hafiz Beder, and I'm in the region of Mission City at NYSERDA. So I'll be discussing through that special program design, yet the different categories of the different projects with the rest of my team here. So the table we're looking at right now is the application category stated in the four, which lists the testing project or the testing categories of projects the DOE is looking to fund within this, within this, within this round that Matt talked about. And I'll advise that folks get themselves finalized with the strict definition of this within the four. But I think what we can talk about is the three ineligible categories. So within this, within this round of funding, the DOE has clearly called out that the funds cannot go into the construction of a new electric generating facility. The funds cannot also be used for construction of a new large-scale battery facility that will not be used for adapting capacity during disruptive events. And lastly, the funds cannot be used for any cybersecurity projects within, within the systems of the eligible applicants. So, next slide, please. So this slide speaks to our unscheduled award criteria. And just to give a bit of a background of that, after an application like Matt spoke about in March under receipt of federal funds, these are the criteria which should be used to allow these succession proposals or applications to NYSERDA. Here, all informed by the funding opportunity announcement guidelines. I'll read through all five of them just to, just to give folks what to watch for. So number one, priority shall be given to projects that will generate the greatest benefits to disadvantaged communities in the state of New York and in reducing the likelihood and consequences of disruption events. Another priority or another criteria I'll be looking at is the percentage made available to entities that sell not more than 4 million megawatt hours per year should not, will not be less than the percentage of customers in the state that are served by these entities. And what this means is, let's take an arbitrary number. If 20% of the customers in the state are served by eligible entities that sell not more than 4 million megawatt hours a year, 40% of the awards would, at the minimum, go to those entities. The third criteria we're looking at is there should be evidence in the proposals that the solution will have a high potential for replication and addressing demonstrated grid resilience state. So replication whether within the eligible entities themselves and replication outside to boost that resilience across the state. The fourth criteria we're looking at is that priority shall be given to projects where the proposals call funding contributions with respect to the degree of risk, potential to benefit from the work and financial status of the organization are appropriate. What this speaks to is, as part of the program design from the DOE, it does say eligible entities who sell more than 4 million megawatts need to 100% match the grant given to them. And people below that threshold will only need to match a third of that as part of the announcement. So part of the criteria we're looking at is where the sources of funds are coming from, from our proposals and their appropriateness. And lastly, we'll be strongly considering projects that will support the New York climate outcomes and whatever we don't acknowledge targets for the state. Next slide, please. The second point we're talking about today is about the funding and data collection. And what this means is, basically, we describe our unscheduled procurement process on how we issue these funds. So NYSERDA will be issuing these awards through its competitive solicitation process and will ensure that, as part of the requirement, like I said, at the minimum, the percentage of awards made available to eligible entities that sell not more than 4 million megawatt hours is not less than the percentage of customers in the state. And this is a major signpost to a million of stakeholders that's informing in those categories. Also, as required by the DOE, we are required to state how we're going to collect data on the defined metrics on each of the project objectives that we state for potential activities. And we'll be using our existing CRM collections and mechanisms to do that. And lastly, the DOE also requires that we share the progress of these metrics to the public. And we have spread out between that group of data link up. Next slide, please. So, right now, we are, we are at the public hearing phase as part of the application requirement. And this four segments or five segments is basically trying to outline what the next steps will be. So after today, with the feedback and comments that we submitted either through our Q and A write-down and the submission portal that will be opening till the 17th of February, we are, we will look at this feedback incorporated and finalize our application documents. In a special, we'll be able to submit the package to the DOE by the 20th of March. And based on that, we expect, and this is not a solid timeline, to get feedback from the DOE around Q2 of 2023 so that we'll be able to release the solicitations around Q3, Q4, 2023. But like I said, this timeline is subject to change and based on the feedback or when we get feedback from the DOE. Next slide, please. And lastly, for also, we have also three main areas where we are really interested in collecting the feedback, apart from the ones you've submitted currently. And the first one is, we'd like to hear what our stakeholders think in terms of focusing this funding, this four that is being released on our municipal electric utilities and rural electric cooperatives, at least for this initial two years of federal funding rounds. And secondly, we would like feedback on the ideas of the funding reach, whether we should have minimum or maximum awards, especially in light of the cost share requirements. Like I described before, all potential of these have a level of contribution regardless of the amount of electricity they sell or the size of the utility. So we are looking at, we're seeking feedback if there are any proposals on the cap or the range that we should look for. And lastly, for our procurement processes, to reduce the application body for submissions, we are looking to get feedback if folks would like to see a two-step procurement process where we have a light level concept paper round where we evaluate, where we can give a thumbs up or thumbs down on ideas and encourage or discourage kind of feedback before we have the full submission from eligible participants. We'd like to hear feedback on that. And like I said, you can drop the questions right now in the Q and A box on the chat, or we are going to be receiving written comments submitted via email to ritchardfun@nyserta.ny.gov until 5:00 p.m. on the 17th of February, so one week from now. So that's the general background and the details of feedback, I think. I'll go to the next slide, please. Yes, so based on the discussion we've given, I think we're happy to bring it back and collect the questions that have so far been submitted in the Q and A. And I think I'll ping it to my colleague Anna Brown to walk us through the questions and give responses as much as she can immediately in the next 20 minutes.
Thanks so much, Hafiz, and to Matt. I'm Anna Brown, and I'm going to, we have received some questions in advance as people have registered to participate in today's public hearing. So I will walk through the questions and comments that I have to date. You are still able to, if you would like to pop a question into the question and answer function using, clicking that link, you can do that. We also, just to underscore, are still accepting comments via email at the address here. I did want to just note that we may not be able to provide answers to all your questions, really focusing on gathering feedback and comments. And so in some cases, you know, we might even put a question back to you that you're putting to us. And I can see that in the first couple of questions, I wanted to note that. So really interested in comments. We will answer questions to the extent that we can. So the first question, there are a couple of questions actually related to whether NYSERDA is considering a maximum amount, an award amount for individual project applications. And similarly, wondering if there will be caps on, whether there will be caps on the annual or overall level of awards. This is a question that we actually would like to hear comments on. We don't have a specific answer to this. We will be factoring in the range of the parameters that are provided by DOE, but we would love to hear comments on this. So if you would like to offer any comments here or send us an email, we would welcome that. There's a next, there's another question around, what is the state doing to address some of the transmission difficulties that we currently face to our substations in our rural areas? And I wanted to, I can provide a comment here, wanting to say that we do recognize that this is a challenge and that all stakeholders have identified the need for a coordinated strategy to meet the needs of the moment. But through our solicitations and opportunities like this, we're focusing on R and D opportunities within our distribution system at this point in time. Another comment here is, are there any thoughts being given to the new generation of small-scale nuclear reactors? Currently, Alaska is in the process, looking into the new scale reactors and feel they may even be able to have them online by the end of the decade. They have winter peaking load, and this would greatly benefit. I'm wondering if this would fit. And another comment, thanks for consideration of cooperatives at this meeting. We have, we have what they need. There's a stressing that the need for more support for rural isolated areas. I wanted to see if maybe, Hafiz, do you want to respond to the question about nuclear, small-scale nuclear reactors?
Yes, sure. So the, within this four, like I said, the guideline from the DOE does exclude the construction of a new generation facility within this announcement. So that will be the response I'll give on the question about the small-scale nuclear reactors and those generating facilities that are not eligible for this opportunity.
We did receive a couple of notes from folks who would be interested in providing some oral comments. So I'm going to ask that Tim Johnson be taken off mute. We are asking for folks who do wish to provide oral comments, please keep those to three minutes, just so we can accommodate as many inputs as possible. And you're welcome to, again, some full testimony to us via email. So Tim Johnson?
This is Tim Johnson. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great, great. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. I am the CEO of Atsea Electric Cooperative in Hartwick, New York, and I'm speaking on behalf of the New York State Rural Electric Cooperative Association. New York's electric cooperatives are also members of the New York Association of Public Power, and we fully support comments that will be added by NIAAP after mine, sometime after mine. The federal IAJA funding would provide valuable support for New York's cooperatives, obviously, and to the municipalities for transitioning to electrication. NICE RICA's members, that is, the co-ops, are eligible entities under 40101D. And we have also suffered disruptive events in this section, including flooding, ice, wind, rain, and snowstorms. We support the goal of reducing climate change, but we are concerned with costs, resiliency issues, and short timelines for massive infrastructure investments. We are asking that the, this funding, 40101D funding, be made available to municipalities and co-ops because we will quickly be able to deploy and demonstrate the benefits of needed improvements. And needed upgrades for electrification include second-generation AMI, substation improvements, heavier wire, new poles, moving pole lines, vegetation management, higher-capacity transformers, software systems, and possibly battery projects. The municipalities and the co-ops have led the way in the past on innovative, smart, consumer-focused investment, so this funding should be made available to our group. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you very much, and thanks for keeping your comments concise. I do also know there's a request to provide comments from NIAAP. I think it's Dave Leathers. Would you like to speak now? Again, keep it to three minutes, please.
Hear me okay?
Yes, thanks.
Matt, Hafiz, Anna, and the NYSERDA team, I appreciate the opportunity to offer comments on behalf of NIAAP, Consumer-Owned Utilities, during this hearing, on the formula grants for grid resilience funding provided through Section 40101D of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act of 2021. I'm Dave Leathers. I offer these comments as the president of NIAAP and the general manager of the Jamestown Board of Public Utilities. NIAAP is a state association of eight municipal electric utilities and four cooperative electric utilities in New York State. NIAAP members have worked closely with NYSERDA for many years to develop innovative projects and implement initiatives that meet our community needs while supporting and advancing the climate and energy goals of New York State. In the case of my utility in Jamestown, we worked with NYSERDA in the 1980s to establish the district heating system serving our downtown corridor that has officially operated for approximately 40 years. Most recently, we have partnered with NYSERDA on the Accelerate the Southern Tier Climate Technology and Clean Energy Program, which is benefiting many businesses and individuals in southwestern New York. NIAAP's nonprofit electric utilities serve residents and businesses in all parts of the state, and we have been regularly sharing our concerns regarding the growing challenges to grid resiliency and reliability with the Public Service Commission, NYSERDA, our legislators in the executive chamber. All our systems meet the IAJA definition of eligible entities and are located in areas where frequent weather disruptive events occur, including wind, ice storms and blizzards in upstate New York, and high wind and damaging flood events in mid-state and on Long Island. At times, these weather events have caused catastrophic damage to some of our utility systems. Addressing the increasing challenge to the reliability and resiliency of our utility systems has been an ongoing priority for NIAAP. We are very pleased to see NYSERDA has included funding opportunities for the majority listed DOE categories under this program, including upkeep, maintenance, and replacement work that both sustains and improves electric reliability. Our utilities have identified a wide range of projects that will support and enhance the resiliency of our systems. As consumer-owned utilities, our members are uniquely positioned to identify, expeditiously develop and implement projects and initiatives that will best mitigate and address these challenges in our communities. In addition, as local utilities, our systems are best equipped to measure the success of these innovative projects and initiatives to provide essential, timely feedback to NYSERDA and other stakeholders. We recommend that you dedicate the entire pool of resources through this program to the municipal electric utilities and rural electric cooperatives. These funds would make a big difference for the NIAAP members and our customer owners. Strictly from a scale perspective, it would mean very little to the investor in utilities and their customers. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide comments and input.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your input and, again, for keeping your comments concise. A couple comments, questions have come in just around whether the slides will be distributed. That is a question we can answer. We are recording, and we will post this webinar on our site. That, it does take us a couple days, so just be watching the site. We can provide a link to that in a follow-up, but we will be making these slides available. I wanted to make, there's a question to also provide oral input from the Municipal Electric Utilities Association. Jim Stokes, if you could come off mute. And again, keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Jim Stokes. I'm the executive director of the New York Municipal Utilities Association. Our association consists of 40 municipal electric utility members located throughout upstate New York, and I'm also speaking on behalf of the MUA's Independent Energy Efficiency Program, or IEEP. The MUA was formed in 1930 to represent and promote its members' interests in the provision of safe, efficient, and cost-effective electric utility services to their customers. All municipal members are not-for-profit public utilities. While system sizes vary, the majority of members are small rural villages. Many are identified as disadvantaged communities. And in addition, because our systems are subject to extreme weather conditions, we also face challenging grid resiliency and reliability issues. Because MUA members do not pay a system benefit charge, they are ineligible for for clean energy fund programs in the vast majority of NYSERDA programs. Rather, the MUA self-funds its energy efficiency efforts through the IEEP. As such, we believe the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act could be an important source of external funding for our systems to advance key resiliency projects, improve system reliability, and to create new good-paying jobs. Electrification will strain the existing infrastructure of our municipal systems. Significant capital improvements to substations and distribution infrastructure will be required to sustain increased loads and customer demands. While individual system needs will vary, proper planning for electrification is a crucial need shared by all of our members. Some members have identified a need to install and/or upgrade advanced-measuring infrastructure systems in order to better identify system demands and needs. Additionally, all our members and the customers they serve would benefit from evaluations of individual system capacities and the formulation of recommendations and plans for system improvements by qualified professional consultants. These are important initiatives that would represent extremely beneficial use of IAJA funding. MUA has established a track record for supporting and expanding funding of future projects with municipal and electric utilities. NYSERDA's recently established municipal pilot program and the 2021 Regi Operating Plan is a good example of working partnerships with municipal utilities and rural cooperatives. MUA, IEEP, and our municipal utility system urge NYSERDA to devote this program and funding sources to New York State's municipal utilities and rural electric cooperatives. Spreading the program dollars among these systems would have the greatest impact per dollar spent, and this investment would most effectively and efficiently leverage the available funds toward the ultimate program objective. We endorse the comments of Mr. Leathers and Mr. Johnson, and thank you all for your time this afternoon.
Thank you so much for your input. I'm going to highlight a question that has come in, and I'm going to ask my colleague, Colleen, to respond. There's a question about whether NYSERDA has defined criteria for the statutory requirement to prioritize projects that generate the greatest benefit, the greatest community benefit. Colleen, would you come off mute to respond?
I'm off mute. Hello, everyone. Thank you for participating in today's webinar. So, you know, we actually are looking to hear some feedback from you on this particular issue. Again, just to repeat, you know, the statutory criteria requirement to prioritize projects that generate the greatest community benefit. We have, in fact, not defined that term yet, but again, are looking for your feedback on how that definition should be applied or what should be included within it. So thank you for the question.
Great. Another question that has come in, I'm going to ask Hafiz to respond to this one. How do you define entities that sell under 4 million megawatt hours, ESCOs, utilities, et cetera? And how's the statewide percentage of entities determined? Hafiz?
Thanks, Anna. So the point on the 4 million megawatt, the guideline from the four was required to electricity sales per year. So it is saying entities who sell more than 4 million megawatt hours per year will be required to 100% match the cost of their award. And entities, eligible entities who sell below that will require to match a third of that. So that's what the formula of megawatt hours speaks to. On the second half of your question, which is asked the state, what percentage of entities is going to be determined? We plan to defer to the F4 on this and follow the DOE guidelines that keeps getting updated on how determined this percentage is. Thank you.
And then a sort of related question is around, will individual applicants also have a co-funding requirement? Hafiz, do you want to take this one, too?
Yes, and I think I covered it in my first answer, in my previous answer. But the DOE guideline does state that cost share requirements are for all potential entities. And this is based, like I said, on the electricity sales per year. And anything above 4 million megawatt hours a year, our potential entities is to match 100% of the cost. And anything below that, they need to match a third of the potential grants.
I believe that we have responded to the questions that have come in so far. I wanted to just remind you, you can still put your questions into the chat. We are going to be on for a bit longer. There are, and also to the points that have come up, some of the questions that have come to us, again, we are interested in feedback on some of those questions around maximum award, et cetera. So, you know, we would be curious if you have thoughts on that. I want to check with you, Hafiz. I think we're going to, our plan is to sort of I think we're going to, our plan is to sort of keep this open until 3:30, so we can just hang out if other questions don't come in. And also wanted to remind you that we can still accept comments to the email address until next Friday. Hafiz, is there anything else, like just, I think we've covered the main content while we just let folks sit and think about if there's additional comments or questions?
No, just, yeah, looking forward to the coming time, so, thanks, Anna.
And there are a couple more questions, I think, popping in. We'll just gather those. So, there's a question that has come in around, will multi-year awards be considered, especially with current challenges related to supply chain delays and challenges? Would be curious to hear your comments on this. Again, we're working within the parameters of what, of the FOA, the guidance, and then our funding, the internal match funding we will use, but would be curious if you have specific direction or guidance on this.
Yeah, and I'll jump in and try to answer this. We haven't specifically contemplated multiple-year awards for a same entity getting awards for multiple rounds of a solicitation. To some degree, we're going to have to follow, or not to some degree, we'll have to follow the rules that's included within any FOA and any additional guidance as provided by the federal government. It's a follow-up question that we can take and consider, but we'd be interested also in public feedback as to why or why we should not allow multiple-year awards or multiple awards over a course of several years to a certain extent.
So, feel free to, there's again, again, a question about will the presentation be distributed? We will post it on our website. That's the plan. Again, it will, it'll be a recording of this webinar. We will post it. It just takes us a few days to get that ready to post, but next week it will be posted. So, I think we will, could just, again, as I said, we'll stay here. We want to make sure we have maximize time for people to provide input, but also if you need to think a bit more on it, you know, send us, send us a note. We're very interested in what you have to say, and questions are continuing to drip in, so that's why we're here. So, I will take a peek. So, there's a kind of comment slash question that supply chains is a real concern, so will there be extensions allowed? I think, Matt, I can turn it back to you to perhaps further underscore your point.
Yep, thanks, thanks, Anna. Yeah, and thanks for the question. Supply chain is a real issue. It is certainly varied and constantly changing. We welcome people's feedback on that. There, there will of course be time requirements that are included in, as they are included in all federal programs, so, you know, regardless of what supply chain issues are going on, we will need to have projects that are scoped, scheduled, and executed within the timelines that are allotted for within the FOA guidelines. So, we welcome feedback on supply chain issues and can certainly raise those things, but I think ultimately we'll have to comply with the federal requirements for execution and implementation as well.
Thank you, Matt. Again, we're just here. We're going to keep it open until 3:30. If you feel like you've gotten what you need, you know, you're welcome to drop off as well, but we're just going to keep this webex open until 3:30, in case you have additional comments or questions. Okay, Matt, I think I have another one for you. The question is, will the full extent, terms, and criteria set forth in the IIJA be added to NYSERTA grant awards as well, MWBE, Workforce Development, and Verbal Justice by America?
Yeah, thanks. Good, great question. Yeah, so, any contract that's issued by NYSERTA using federal funds will be required to include the full set of terms, conditions, and requirements as passed down through the federal government. So, those certainly apply in this program. They may vary from program to program, so it's important to make sure that as any participant is responding to any program that NYSERTA launches using federal funds or any other source, that you carefully review the terms and conditions, which will include all of the applicable terms and conditions associated with that program and funding source.
We're very grateful everybody's here and thank you for your helpful questions. Again, we really are interested in any additional thoughts you may have, so please do keep, take us up on the window to send us comments by next Friday. We will just stay here. I'm just repeating myself, but want to make sure you feel comfortable to keep dropping comments into the chat box if you need to. But it is also Friday afternoon, so if you have other things to do, please feel free to drop off. Have a comment coming in, which I'll read. "Thank you for considering supporting the municipals and co-ops. If you could provide project support, especially around meeting all the federal requirements, that would be very helpful, too. We don't have grant writing and documentation staff on hand." Thank you very much for that comment. Appreciate that. Appreciate everybody's time and hanging out with us. Definitely curious to hear any further comments. There's sort of a little bit of a drip coming in, so we are going to stay on, but yeah, we're happy to be talking about grid resilience with you on a Friday afternoon. So, feel free to jump, drop comments in here, or definitely send us an email. So, maybe just since we aren't being, I think there might be another couple of questions coming in, but I think maybe what we'll do is swing the slide back. If you could go back to the slide that has the areas of feedback, just to put this up there, that these are some specific questions we're thinking about. So, we'll put the, let you just see this, and I see another questions coming in as well, so we can respond to that. Okay, so the question, there's a question, which is, "Do you expect to make awards available for the hiring of employees in connection with the listed categories of projects?" Matt, may I ask you if you have thoughts on that? We will definitely be working within the parameters of what, you know, what's in the FOA put forth by the Department of Energy, but Matt, do you have any more specific thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, we can go back and double-check. I just conferred with Hafiz quickly, and both of us, our memory is telling us that hiring of staff at municipal utilities is an eligible category for expenditure, but to the extent of our memories, but, you know, at the end of the day, we're going to follow the FOA for what is eligible or not. So, the parts that we can recall is all project-focused and based, so that's kind of what our current thinking is. We'll double-check to make sure that our memories are both accurate, and, you know, to the extent that somebody would like to provide written comment or feedback on that, you know, that also would be helpful into our thinking.
So, there's an additional sort of piece of content that's been pulled in, I believe, in response to the earlier question about, about hiring staff, and there's just an extract pulled, and I will share that. Matt, you may want to weigh in further on this. It says, "The announcement provides, 'Funding may also be used for the training, recruitment, retention, and reskilling of skilled and properly credentialed workers in order to perform the work required for the particular resilience measures listed above and described by the state or Indian tribe in their program narrative, as described in more detail in that the section, ALRD section 4.b.2.4."
Yep, so, thanks for that, and thanks for whoever pulled that out quickly. I guess I interpreted the question, I mean, could we pay for staff? I interpret that specific aspect to indicate that training and scaling and credentialing could be, could be funded. So, I think that might be the nuance, and apologies if I misunderstood the original question, but.
Actually, and I see that there was an additional follow-up. I think they are coming in slightly out of order. So, the additional clarification was, was curious whether that includes outside contractors only or employees. I think you sort of just spoke to that, Matt. There's another question coming in, which is about, "How will the two-step procurement process work?" Again, this is not something we've cited on, but are more just interested in feedback on a two-staged procurement process, which would involve the concept paper and full submission. This is just something we would be curious for input on, but hasn't been pre-established.
And just to, so, while we're speaking, we put this to look for feedback, is we answered the concept paper step where basically the general idea around an eligible category will be presented in like a one to two page that will require, and then the project evaluation team will be able to give like an encourage or discourage kind of decision for prospective entities, and based on the feedback we provide on that step, then applicants can go on to the requirements of the full submission that is required in the FOA, which by then just more than the project itself, but it's all this other justification that need to be provided, which we feel will require much more. The concept paper, the two-step procurement process, like we said, is mainly to help like reduce the application burden so that entities don't spend time, money, and resources putting to be an application that may not be favorable, but they have a chance to get some level of preliminary feedback before we go through that full submission. And we'd like your feedback on that idea. Thank you.
Okay, there's other comments coming in. Okay, so, I'm just trying to, so, there's a comment made, I appreciate the comments made on behalf of the cooperatives. "We are in the unique position to be the go-between with state and federal programs. NRCA is a valuable resource for us and has some useful tools for us to use." And thank you for this forum. Thank you for that comment. And I have another question. Hafiz, I want to have you respond to this one. "Approval of a concept paper is not automatic approval of full submission." Correct? And again, this is something that is a consideration. It's not something we've decided on, but, Hafiz, do you want to take this?
Yes, I agree. So, again, looking forward to your comments, but if we do agree on that, yes, the concept paper and the full submission will be judged on their own independent validity. So, even if the concept paper is given an encourage, we'll still evaluate the full submission itself based on the merits. based on the merits of our initial requirements of NYSERTA and the FOA guidelines. So, it is not an automatic, it does, the approval of the concept paper does translate to approval of the submission.
So, there's another, just a comment offered up that is to say that this person agrees with the idea of having a feedback period to refine the submission. So, this is in relationship to the idea of a two-step process. Thank you for that. And we're here for another nine minutes on this lovely Friday afternoon, talking about grid resilience and this federal funding opportunity. Welcome any additional comments that folks have. In particular, we are curious about these areas of feedback. And also reminder that we will accept comments at this email address. So, here's another question, and again, would welcome comments on, on the question. So, again, I may, I'm going to turn this back to request for comments. But the question is, "Has NYSERTA considered the possibility of allowing funding requests from associations on behalf of individual eligible members? For example, the associations that offered comments earlier." I think that was like NIAP and MEUA. Would be curious to hear comments on this. Hafiz or, or Matt, do you have anything to add besides that this is an area we are, we'd be interested to hear from members of the public and those participating here, what thoughts you have on this?
Yeah, thanks. That's an interesting idea. I don't, I don't know that it's been part of the discussion so far. If so, it's been a minor part. So, I think we would welcome more detailed thoughts on what is being suggested there. And in particular, welcome feedback identifying how that would make it more efficient or effective for, you know, the end-use customers to access the funds or administer the funds, or NYSERTA to, you know, engage and partner with people. So, just understanding that a little bit better and the specifics behind it would be really helpful. Thank you for that suggestion.
We have about five minutes left. Again, keep, if you have additional comments or questions, please drop them in. This has been really helpful, and we will be looking at the comments and statements that folks have submitted already or will continue to submit until next Friday. And then, we, we are kind of putting a stop on, for, for comment submission by the end of next Friday, just because we have to take all of that into consideration as we work to fulfill the application requirements to submit to Department of Energy. So, really appreciate this opportunity to hear from folks and have time to hear more in the coming week. But this has been really, really helpful for us, and we're looking forward to thinking about how to consider all of, all of these good inputs. We have just a couple more minutes left for any final comments. We will close the public hearing at 3:30, so three minutes. I wanted to just give you one more last call for any comments. We still have two minutes, and we are not going to cut this off early. But, so you still have another minute now until you can submit comments. Again, this has been really helpful. We, this part, this part of the process of completing the application is really important to us, and, and it's important to Department of Energy as well. So, grateful for those of you who have joined us and have stayed on for the entirety of this public hearing. We will look forward to further comments in the, in the email, receiving with this email address that you can see here. We are excited about the, what we're hearing so far. We think this is a really great opportunity for New York State, and appreciate all of the commitment that you all have to thinking about the future of our energy systems and the resilience of our grid. Really grateful that all of you have participated. And, yeah, just want to, I guess, sort of give this as the final closeout, because we are, we're at 3:30 and it's Friday afternoon. And, yeah, we're really just appreciative of all of your time. So, thanks so much. And with that, I think we're going to close it off. Thanks so much. Please send us comments and have a great weekend.